Mr. West, will you call the roll?
Marlene Richmond.
Here.
Charles Cilio.
Here.
G.G. Teblin-Muffet.
Present.
Bob Wakebright.
Here.
Bob Weisbord.
Here.
Council President Aaron Udrick.
Present.
Mayor Tom Gray.
Present.
All right. Number three on the agenda. An appointment to fill a vacancy on council. He will accept a resolution for an appointment from the floor.
I'm just gonna make the nomination, I'm gonna put it forward and then we'll discuss later as we do. So I'm gonna nominate Barbara Fortner to replace Richard Diaz for the remainder of his term. So that is my motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Cilio. Is there a discussion?
Do others want to put other names forward or do you want to discuss this?
Right now, we have, that's what's on the table. But anybody in the discussion can discuss anything they'd like. Any options?
Well, I think all of us are gonna say the same first remark is, we are very lucky to have the people who put their name forward, that interviewed with us, that came forward and said, yes, they would be willing and would like to sit at this table and help the Borough of Norbert. I don't think we had, I'll speak for myself, you know, very impressive people, very caring people, people that, you know, we trust with the future of the Borough and we want to work with at this table. Why I put Barbara's name forward and not the others? Basically, she was as different from me as I thought anybody was, and I don't need another me at the table. The things that I've seen over the last two years, what she's asked, her dedication coming to the Borough, a level-headed approach where she may have disagreed with the Borough Council, it's all been consistently impressive, and certainly don't agree with her on a lot of the issues I've heard, but that doesn't mean I don't respect the thought process and the detail that she has brought forward. So that is where I came to feel that she would fit best in this role, and that's my thoughts.
Anybody else?
I'd second what Bob said. I mean, again, we've got, we've had vacancies for commissions and had just an embarrassment of riches of people putting their hands up and volunteering, and I think that's the same here. You know, we've only gotten one open seat until, you know, for the next, not even quite two years, to fill here, and I honestly, everyone who came to the table last week, at the last meeting, would be very happy to have them served, the community be well-served by any of those folks doing it, unfortunately, I think, one. In looking at what we need to do over the next year to two years, there's a lot of work that needs to get done in the committees and with the office in sort of a management transition period and some supporting that transition and transitioning some of the work that we've done from being a little more tactical to a little bit more strategic. I've seen Barbara come to, I would also support her candidacy, I've seen her come to a lot of committee meetings over the last year, including most of our finance and administration committee meetings, and always be extremely well-informed and very helpful, to the point of actually going and doing work outside of committee and coming back and supporting us as we did our work on the budget last year, and always with a very helpful and thoughtful approach to things that I think would serve us, serve us all well in the work we need to do over the next couple of years, and also interact well with the, as would frankly, any of the candidates, knowing most of them, communicate well with the rest of the citizenry and with the council, and provide a good channel of communications, which is something that's really important.
Anything else?
Other than just to acknowledge and appreciate Steve DeRico, Deborah Bonstorf, Kimberly Bezak, Kimberly Neff, Jen Pryor, all of you who, even Dave Schoenhardt, who did withdraw his name as a candidate, just so, Jim Nixon, I said Jim Nixon.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay, I'm so impressed by the confidence, the confidence that we have in this community, and I hope that when my seat is vacated, that there will be equal as many people interested in sitting at the table. Thank you so much.
All right.
I hope you all keep involved in the community as well, because we have an election coming up in two years, we're gonna need bodies, we need people to run for office, and I'd really encourage you to stick in there, hang in there and run. It's a really good opportunity to serve the Borough. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. If no further discussion, we can do a, I think it's supposed to be a roll call vote. Okay. And this would be, the council resolves to appoint Barbara Fortner to the open position on Norbert's Borough Council.
Okay. Marlene Richmond.
I, aye.
Aye. Charles Cilio.
Aye.
G.G. Teblin-Muffet.
Aye.
Bob Wakebright.
Aye.
Bob Weisbord.
Aye.
Council President Aaron Udrick.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations. If you are so prepared, Mr. Mayor Grady will swear you in, and will put you right to work.
Oh, gosh. Don't he cut me off, is he? Sure, oh, you have your glasses on. You do it.
When G.G. takes pictures of her glasses, they're actually funny. It's in background. You have to put your camera on.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations, both.
Thank you.
Have a seat. Welcome to the table.
Thank you.
I think she has resigned.
Yeah, I think I asked, yeah, I don't think I get to.
By filling the vacancy. So council will accept letters of interest for those of you who would like to apply for the vacancy board, effective immediately, and the vacancy board, if someone could, the legalistic, well, Ms. Fortner, you did it. Go ahead, tell the public, if you could, what.
I read, I read a brief summary of, back when I said yes, so I'm not gonna say that I remember it all, but it's, you serve as a way to bring council to an agreement if there's a vacancy on council, and.
And council cannot agree.
Yeah, and when council cannot agree, right, when there's a deadlock of some kind, then the vacancy board person calls council to order and, I didn't get all the way into understanding, do I get to vote, you know, it's a vacancy board member, does that person get to vote, or is it just?
The decider, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, so I thought, if it ever happens, because apparently it's only happened in Pennsylvania, maybe four times in our history, so, you know.
In the state.
In the state, right.
In the whole state.
Not in.
So applications can go to the Borough Office. Thank you. We have here the number, two members of Yorkies, is that correct, right in the back. Any chance we could swap seats so that they could come up to the front, or?
Would somebody be willing to?
Oh, yeah, we have two chairs over there.
What's best for people?
I think maybe actually if you gentlemen could sit at the desk there, then everyone would be able to hear you more easily.
I'm perfectly willing to stand, I sit in front of the desk.
Yeah. So we ask members of Yorkies to come, and this is basically an informational opportunity. It's very rare for the council members to meet our building inspectors. It's something that they liaison with the office, doing inspections and being out in the community and meeting with contractors, and I'm pleased to have you, thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
Thank you for inviting us.
To a night meeting. If you could just state your names for the record.
My name is Francis Marion Newhams, go by Frank, and I'm a master code professional and the manager of municipal services for Yorkies Incorporated.
Thank you.
Joseph Michael Lavelle, and for Yorkies, I'm a building code official, construction code official, and a plans examiner.
Okay, thank you. I know that there were a number of questions that came up at the last meeting in regards to the demolition permit that was issued for 198 Elmwood Avenue, but maybe we could take it up to a higher altitude and talk about, just maybe briefly, how you work with the Borough Office and how, and the kinds of things that you see out in the field and deal with, because I don't know if we have any direct experience in the moment.
With the Borough Office, permit applications are received by the Borough staff and forwarded to us on a regular basis, we're in the Borough, and we pick up and sign for and log out drawings and plan sets and applications, and we have other clients we do the same work for, so everything goes into our major key person in the office, Danielle, who schedules everything, and she puts them basically in order of receipt, first in, first out. So our effort is to return permits within the, either approved or denied, within the timeframes that the state has set, and that's 15 days for residential, 30 days for commercial jobs. We always try to beat that time, and depending on the workload, we keep it to a week, possibly a week and a half for most permits. And when I say denied, that's the only option that the state gives us. We're told we must either approve a permit or deny a permit, and if we deny a permit, we must present documentation to the applicant as to the exact reason by section and number of the code, and exactly what it says and what is required. Once we approve a permit, we work with the Borough to contact a contractor and put them in touch with us so that they have an open phone communication with us to schedule inspections during work, and that, construction inspections take place in logical sequence depending on the type of job it is, so if it's a brand-new, single-family dwelling, we begin with a zoning survey to make sure they're within the setbacks, to footings, foundations, framing, and I'm simplifying things, mechanical plumbing, mechanical being the HVAC system, and energy conservation, insulation, ceiling of the house, and final inspection ultimately, oh, I'm sorry, I left out electrical. Both Matt and I are certified electrical inspectors as well. So we work with the contractors and the owners of the property closely, we always try to stay in touch and get to know each other, and do whatever we can to fill their needs, but also explain to them when they need to do more, and that's a real brief synopsis of what we do.
Okay, I'll ask one more question, and then we'll go around the room and give each council member a chance. In regards to demolition permits, what's a permit that's issued? In my read of it, there's a number of next steps for the person who's trying to get to demolition, or to perform a demolition that they have to follow up, it's not necessarily a cartilage piece of paper to go forward. Could you go into the detail of what is entailed after the permit is issued, what legally is required?
Well, there's a couple of chapters in the building code that apply to demolition, and amongst other things, protection of the public, protection of adjacent properties is key. So in the case of most concern, 198 Elmwood around the church, a construction fence was erected. It surprised me that he put it up so fast, because he's paying thousands of dollars for that fence, but it's there so that people cannot be injured by falling debris or machinery working on the property. But he's also required to terminate all utilities, and we have to witness that termination, so the disconnect of the electrical, the capping of the sewer, capping of the water supply, all those utilities have to be properly terminated before work begins, and then.
And when you say witness, you mean that you are on site?
Yes.
And you make an arrangement to be there at the time when it's going to happen?
Exactly. And finally, hazardous materials are great concern. There's EPA and DPW rule, DPA rules, I said that wrong, but anyway, Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, and they set the rules that we don't enforce, but we have to make sure that they're complied with. So we want to have a pre, we always call them pre-con meetings, pre-construction, but in this case it'd be pre-demo meeting, where we will walk the site, we will go through the building, and if they say there's no asbestos, I'm gonna make sure that Joe and I and Matt see that there's no asbestos in the building. Lead is a little bit easier to remediate, because what you basically want to do is keep dust down, and there's an order that they have to have a standing water supply with a two-inch supply hose to keep the debris wetted down during demolition, and that's just for the case of lead. Mold is another one we would be looking for, and in either case, mold or asbestos, it would have to be licensed, remediation companies would have to come in and take care of it first, and give us written certification that that remediation was done by the standards required before work would go further.
Let's start with Council Wakebright.
First of all, thank you for coming, and we've heard, you know, from the homeowners in the past year or so that have interacted with your services, we've heard great, I've heard great things, so, you know, as far as your ability to work with them, give guidance where possible, so thank you for that service, and thank you from the homeowners that I know in the community. I guess what, you know, struck me on this was the price of the demolition and the reality of it's an older building, that more than likely there's PCBs, there's lead, you know, based on the age of it, lead, good chance there is asbestos. When you do a building like this, and I guess, let me back up a little bit, I don't know what other, you know, you do a lot of residential buildings for us, I don't know if you've got experience with larger, commercial buildings, I don't know whether, you know, one thing we never asked when we hired you on, do you do, what other municipalities you serve in this function for, so I wanted, you know, to get a better sense of your background, and then my specific concern is when, you know, everybody I know that is in any way involved in construction, when they look at a building of that size, of that age, and they say, they hear, you know, a $30,000 amount, they say it's absurd, I've heard numbers as low as 70 or 80, more likely 150 to 200, and so there's concern that, you know, how much detail is going in there beforehand, and, you know, the fence, the ability to put a fence up right away, which I should note, blew down the other day during the windstorm, so fortunately nobody was walking by, but probably more dangerous than however many months it's gonna take to get to this potential demolition. So that's the concerns, what's the background of Yorkies as far as other municipalities you do this for, other large, commercial buildings, and then specifically, wouldn't that raise a flag to you, especially in light of, you know, the 21st and Market collapse that everybody is aware of and concerned about?
Well, as far as scale goes, one of the projects I've worked on during my tenure with Yorkies was the Paoli Hospital Southwest Village Edition, which is 22 ERs, 16 ORs, and 138 patient rooms, rather a large-scale job. In a previous life, I worked for US Steel, and I was involved in construction of Malaga and Hybride Plant, you all know it, you all use it, you've never heard of it before in your life, and a polyester resins plant, the largest polyester resins plant in the world. So I've worked on large-scale projects, Yorkies has worked on large-scale projects, but we've also worked on patios and minor additions to homes, so we range the entire gum of work to be done. As far as municipalities, we were, we were connected with Norristown, we're right now with East Brandywine, West Brandywine, West Natmeal, which is a farming community, we work with Thornbury, we have about 21 municipalities in some context we serve, whether it's zoning, or planning, or land development, or building construction.
And then my question about the red flag of the low price, you know, what level of inspection did you do before you said, okay?
You mean the price of the demolition?
Yeah, that's the part.
That is probably one of the most ephemeral subjects that anyone can touch on. I could, I could present a contractor here before you who is very reputable and very, very experienced at demolition, could probably put that church on the ground, not take it away, for $10,000 or $15,000. It depends upon their qualifications and their equipment. There is no set price for demolition that actually works. The biggest price is the cost of the materials going across the tipping scale at the dump site, and that's what most contractors pay the most money for out of their own pocket, and that's how they price it out. They try to estimate what the materials are, what materials they're gonna be able to salvage, and what materials they're gonna have to put in a dump. So when I worked for Coatesville, we tore down a Geo Carlson plant, and tear the entire plant down and take away the materials, the winning bid was $1,000, because he was going to recycle the steel that was in the building. So it's hard to really put a finger on demolition in terms of cost.
Okay, so then the level of detail of your inspection of the building before, did you walk through the interior of the building?
Not yet. We have been relying on the drawings that were presented to us, that's why I said we're gonna have a pre-con meeting, pre-demo meeting, where we are going to do that walkthrough before any work begins.
Did you see any drawings or anything that tells like, you know, there's a house that's pretty close to it on Norbert Avenue side, is there anything that shows?
We're aware of that.
No, I'm sure you are, it's a play, you know, on lease construction, might, but, you know, was there anything to show you that, yes, that is, you know, that there is a plan in place to do whatever bracing or whatever?
That would be part of the pre-demolition meeting.
But none of that is known at this stage?
No.
So it's just, okay.
It's, it's just, it's the contractor's responsibility to protect adjacent properties.
Yeah.
And part of that begins with notification, and if there's a requirement that they actually come up and properly protect it with debris boards that would cover the windows and doors facing the church, they would be required to do so. I can't say that nothing's ever gonna hit the house next door, I've been around too long, but it would be every intention of ours that they would proceed with the demolition in a manner in which that wall facing the adjacent house would be one of the last elements removed, and it would be pulled into the debris pile, not pushed out.
And how long would you anticipate a project like this taking with all the?
With its proximity to other buildings, a couple of weeks.
And going through all the environmental stuff?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Couple more weeks. I thought you just meant the physical demolition.
No, no, I guess, you know, there's a lot of concern, why is a fence up that quickly? And, you know, it's, you know, how soon, with all those other questions that you, you know, are gonna find out as soon as it goes forward, you know, that, it seems like pretty surprising, especially since, you know, there was concerns that, you know, it wasn't just for the demolition that the fence went up, so that's why, you know, neighbors are asking that, and, you know, that's why, one of the things that's a concern.
I, I try to stay out of neighborhood arguments, shall we say?
Well, it's more than argument, it's, if it's there for six months, it's play, you know.
I understand that, and I could give a personal opinion on it, and I don't think that's my place to do that, but as I said earlier, it surprised me he put the fence up that fast, he's paying a tremendous amount of money for that fence, I know because I put the fence up and had the municipality it worked for pay for it, I know how much that costs per lineal foot, and it's a, it's a large expense, and there's, there's other reasons than the demolition why he put it up, that's as much as I can probably say.
I hope not, because the rationale of allowance to put him up was because of the demolition?
The allowance was because of the demolition, yes. Actually, it was a requirement, but it was a requirement during the period of demolition.
Exactly.
Not during the time of preparation for demolition.
Council Weisbord?
I just would like to echo Mr. Wakebright's appreciation of the services that you've been providing to the Borough. You've been to inspect in my home personally, and you've always been thoughtful and helpful and fair, I haven't always approved of what I've done, but, but I think if Mr. Capifari, who was our Borough Inspector for many, many years, could, we're looking down, he would be smiling and appreciating the service that you provide to the residents of the Borough, especially Mr. Newham, since you've been doing some of that work yourself, and I'm not yet acquainted with you, sir, but I've heard fine things, so, otherwise, I'll just pass, I have no questions. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Council Richmond?
Thank you for coming out and explaining this.
Council Fortner?
I don't have any questions, I'm just learning at this point, so.
I've got, I've got a couple of questions, because I think you interact more with the office and with the building and zoning than with the committees I'm on, so there are a couple of basic things I just want to make sure I understand about what you do. One is, so we're talking about the permitting process right now, what about buildings that are already not, not facing any kind of permitting event? You do work for us on ongoing building inspection on any kind of regular cycle? Structural inspection, electrical, plumbing, etc.
Oh, there, we understand, if you forgive me for phrasing this as politely as I can, we understand that there is an ordinance in the Borough that properties should be inspected at the time of transfer of ownership.
Yeah.
We have not yet been involved in that, because I think we're lacking directives in terms of what we're supposed to inspect for. I do property transfer inspections in other townships where they've been delineate, defined as to what I'm supposed to inspect, and as a matter of fact, I did one last night, and they failed because they didn't have a cap on an extra drain, but I think we need those rules, and we need to establish a fee structure so that it's a no, it should be a no-cost element for the Borough. In other words, the fee that's paid by the applicant should pay for our services for inspection, and it should not burden the taxpayer with that, with that expense. So I think there's a little bit of preparation to do before we take that task on. We've talked with Sean about it a couple of times now, and we want to get to a point where that can be something we do. At the same time, I've been employed both by the city of York, Pennsylvania, and by the city of Coatesville, big whoop, and, I'm sorry, Coatesville turned my beard white. It's not a joke, it was black when I started there, three and a half years later it was white, but they both had a housing code for rentals, and we have great concerns that you have a lot of rental property in the Borough, and we're not paying enough attention to tenant turnover, as well as, I know one township that actually uses it as a way to get tax money from the tenants that otherwise you don't know are in the Town, in the Borough. But in the short haul, the rental license fee should pay for the rental inspections, and I think the fire department, as well as the building inspectors, should be involved in those inspections, because fire safety is a huge concern, and I'm ready and willing at any time, because of my experience with housing codes, to recommend how to do that, and I'd look forward to doing that, but again, it should be a no-cost element to the Borough.
And just to clarify, the property transfer inspections, those are not currently part of your contract?
We have not been asked to do the.
Just like to intercede here. I was residential building inspector in Norristown for about four years, and that was one of my responsibilities. They used to call them UNO, UNO inspections, now, and they changed that to property transfers. So I did property transfers and rental license inspections, and they got fees for the rental licenses and for the inspections, and it covered the cost, and it was a regular, it's looking at for the health, safety, and welfare of the owners, the tenants, any property owners, everybody, of the general public in general, health, safety, and welfare overall, and.
So I've seen.
And then, so I've seen a couple of communications from, from folks recently about the apartment inspection. It's something I think Lower Marion does, has on the books, but we don't. Sort of take a look at. The other thing, Bob had asked about the, how, how you benchmark the costs on demolition. I'm curious how you do it generally for the more common construction permits, because that's, isn't that how the fees, which pass through, isn't that how that's calculated?
Generally done based on the cost of construction estimate.
Yeah.
We added to the audience one resident who recently built a new house.
Yeah.
And her estimated cost of construction of the house was what we premised, building construction permit fee upon. When we do an inspection and that inspection fails, and when I say fails, I, we use that term generally when it applies because the contractor either failed to do the right work or didn't have it ready when we came, which is an expense to the borough which has no way of compensation, we've recommended that there should be a failed inspection fee. We do that in many municipalities. And I think it would be a good idea to institute one here. But otherwise, our experience has been that the permit fees generally cover the work to be done by inspections. And that, in many townships, well, the farming community I work in, they use 1% of the cost, ten dollars per thousand. And I write permits for a hundred and sixty dollars and I write permits for fourteen thousand dollars, but it covers the cost.
Charlie, I think maybe after your question is, I don't believe it's the responsibility of the building inspector to vet whether they feel that cost is realistic or whether we're to require financial backup to prove that those receipts are correct, or am I, am I?
Well, let me, let me suggest this, that if your building permit fees are not covering the cost of inspection, preparation of plans, plan reviews, then we would be more than happy to work with you to make that adjustment, as well as, believe it or not, we're working in a township where they're pulling in too much money. And that's, if the solicitor were here, he'd tell you that's as much of a problem as not pulling in enough. And it, it needs an adjustment. We work with enough municipalities that we've been experienced in doing that. And we can make projections, make adjustments. We would recommend on a six-month cycle until we get it right.
But, but if you're not benchmarking it as, you're going to say if someone says it's going to cost, you know, five hundred thousand dollars to build a house, and you know, it only costs two fifty, that's not, something, do you take that into consideration?
Yes. Yes, we have tables that are updated every year from the International Codes Council to give the average cost of construction across the United States. And I believe right now, single-family dwellings of type V construction, type V B construction are averaged out at ninety-three dollars and forty-five cents per square foot. Basements at fifteen dollars per square foot, garages at fifteen dollars per square foot. And we take that into account. So if somebody comes in and says, yes, I'm building a twenty-eight thousand square foot house with a double garage, and I'm doing it for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I say, oh, no, you're not.
Just wanted to interject on this point. I think, I think it's helpful to understand, and you can confirm this or not, but that, say for, if I were to demolish my own home, that the cost of taking the home down is one item that I would, that that would be the value of the permit. But the cost of shipping the material to the transfer station or to the dump is a separate matter.
And much higher.
And much higher. So, so the cost of the permit would be only for the deconstruction, the construction involved in taking the building down. I wouldn't be paying a permit fee on the entire cost to me.
I would agree with that.
Is that correct? That's my understanding of how that fee is calculated and why the discrepancy, the discrepancy that Mr. Wegbreit pointed to may exist in the, what we've heard rumors of the total cost versus the actual cost of demolition. And I, I mean, I learned recently filing a building permit that, that actually I don't have to include the cost of some of the finished materials when I apply for a construction permit.
Cabinets and countertops?
So I didn't know that when I did my original kitchen renovation, so I guess I might be entitled to a rebate.
So maybe, man, walk away and learn.
But I mean, I just, I just think it's a fine point that's important to understand when I start to think about the actual value of a, of a construction project, that it doesn't necessarily include all of the materials and processes that take place on a site. It only, it's particular ones.
And is that, is that defined by the laws of the state of Pennsylvania?
Yes. There is actually about a three or four-page entry in the, I brought my regulations with me. That say what is exempted from the permits. Okay. The state has taken that position for years.
Counsel Teblamoffett, do you have any questions?
I don't have a question. I have, well, maybe it's a question. Thank you for being here and thank you for touching on the, all the information you're bringing to us because we need it and we don't exactly have all of the pieces put together as you can tell by the questions. I appreciate your statements regarding public safety and our apartment buildings, and we recently had a fire. And in my conversation just on Monday night with the firehouse, they're asking for maybe a little more shared information from our side over to the fire chief so that they are aware of some of the concerns throughout. So I thank you for bringing that up publicly. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
I would, I would like to say how much I appreciate your kind comments, but I also want to say how much I've appreciated working with the borough for close to ten years now, especially Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming out.
Is there a bottom of a question for me?
Sorry, did you, you said?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Tom.
Again, thank you for your service. I remember when Bill brought you in many years ago. We really appreciate all the work you do for the borough. I looked at the application, I'm trying to wrap my head around what you do and how you evaluate it. When you have the applicant, did you do any vetting of the applicant, if he takes demolition or does a demolition itself?
You mean the contractor, his physical, his demolition?
On this one, it's Lightroom Landscaping, Inc.
Yes.
What if, what if the applicant hired Tom Grady to take it down? Would you have a closure of concern?
I understand the question, and I don't want to like, treat it lightly, but there's nothing in state law that gives us the right or power to do that. I'll tell you a dirty secret that really bothers us as professional inspectors. We have to certify by testing in every field that we inspect. So I currently hold nineteen certifications. It took me thirteen years to get them. I'm very proud of it. Contractor picks up a hammer and says, I'm a contractor, under state law, he's a contractor. He says, I'm an electrician, with a fair side comes, he's an electrician, and that frankly scares the hell out of me. But I don't have any right of law to question him. I, I don't mean to treat that lightly.
No, no, I'm just trying to find out, I think all of us are trying to get the right information and try to figure out what it takes, because I saw the, I saw the applicant, then I saw the applicant give some licenses. The licenses were a couple of home improvement licenses. Is that all you need to take down a building?
Actually, that and a liability insurance policy. And a reputable insurance company has granted the man a million and two million dollar liability policy. We've exhausted our level of inquisition, if it were, you know, how are you qualified to do this? I wish we could do more, but the state doesn't give us the legal power to do more.
And, thank you. And just touching base on the cost itself, taking it down. Are you familiar with the First Baptist Church of Ardmore?
No.
Joe?
About four years ago, there was an issue of demolition of that property, and the developer had to make a decision because that church in Ardmore is about ten thousand square feet, a little smaller than Narbor Church. And on testimony before the, before the zoning board, for Rob Fox, who was chair at the time, the developer and his demolition person testified it would cost two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to tear down that church.
Okay.
Does that cause, I'm just trying to wrap my head around why there's such discrepancies in the cost. I understand Bob Wiseworth, like the truck he owns and everything else, but from thirty thousand dollars to two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, it seems like a wide margin.
It does. It sounds like they weren't trying to salvage anything. I know of at least two companies in the Westchester area that would take the stone from this church and salvage it passionately. I, I work in a farm community named West Napmeo near Morgantown that is a very unique township because all of the roads are lined with stone walls that were built by ironworkers during a recession in the eighteen seventies. Pots, with one of the pots, iron boundaries. People come out to West Napmeo at night to steal the stone from the walls. Believe it or not, there's such a value in good stone.
I believe it.
And salvaging the stone walls, if they do the demolition correctly, can return a tremendous amount of money to the demolition company. So as, as we were discussing earlier, how much salvage you're going to do and how much of the report that they've made of how much it's going to cost them to run debris across the tipping scale doesn't figure into the amount of the permit. It sounds to me like the company that did it in Ardmore was way more honest in the actual cost involved.
Thank you. I really appreciate your answers.
Welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Sorry for that. I can't really see you.
You can always ignore me.
Okay.
I'll just wave, wave back.
All right, let's move on. Committee reports, finance and administration?
So we have our, we have an upcoming finance and administration committee meeting. Scheduled for Monday night. I unfortunately, as I emailed the other members of the committee, am going to be out of town on Monday, unable to make that, so we're going to try to reschedule that meeting for next Friday morning.
Yes.
Primary agenda item being that now that it's the beginning of April, we should start to lay out a timeline for budget process for the year, even if we don't know all the details, just so that we can give a very early notice to the other committees and to the boards and commissions who might need to weigh in on plans for 2017 so that they have time between now and September to have public meetings and, and prepare. So that'll be our main topic of discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Public safety, Counsel Teblamoffett?
As I mentioned, I had a brief meeting. The firehouse invited me over to just have a conversation about making a stronger connection to the folks in this room and the office and sharing of some information. We still are awaiting, and there was a little bit of a miscommunication, but we're hoping to have the Civil Service Commission documents back this week, at the end of this week, so that we can bring it before council.
On Monday night?
On Monday night. We're going to do our best. Thank you.
So add that to the agenda for Monday night.
Okay.
All right.
The executive session afterwards on public safety.
An executive session on public safety will happen after this meeting. Thank you. Public works, Counsel, Counselor Wegbreit.
A lot of things will be discussed at our meeting on March sixteenth. The first is a Wimwood Road easement for the traffic light installation. You know, unfortunately, we've gotten notification that Lower Marion is planning on going ahead and installing a traffic light at the tunnel, which the council then, and I would assume now vehemently disagrees with that solution. That said, it seems to be moving forward and moving forward soon. One of the items that came up last year around this time, when Lower Marion put in their plan for the traffic light, is there's two opportunities where to place the crosswalk that would occur there. One of the locations, which is probably the better location for pedestrians and vehicles, would require Narbor giving an easement to Lower Marion. The other location is outside of Narbor's right-of-way or control. And so, right now, I believe, but I'm not sure, we're going to find out, is the, the current plan is for the one that's outside that control. But, you know, I'd ask Sean to be in touch with Lower Marion because as much as we're begrudging that it may occur, if it's going to occur, we want to make it as safe as possible for all that would utilize that crosswalk. So I wanted to bring it up if they still were looking for that easement, and then bring it to the council if they would be willing to work towards that easement. Is there more detail that I should be telling counsel then?
Just that I spoke with Assistant Manager, Lower Marion Township, and their preferred option is the one that would require an easement from the borough because it, the crosswalk is a little bit shorter, crosses traffic at more of a ninety-degree angle. However, they're prepared to go ahead with the plan if need be that doesn't require our easement. So they just wanted us to discuss and make a final decision now because...
Can you move it forward? Is there any discussion?
Actually, looks longer and...
I think that might just be...
In fact, if these are scaled equally...
They're not.
Well...
That's your, that's why.
Even, even just regardless, without the easement, looks shorter. I also really have a problem with us authorized giving them an easement for a crosswalk that we know is simply more deadly, more dangerous, less good for elderly people, for all people, than the crosswalk that would be, we would have if we were to do a roundabout. And I just, I don't see how we can in good conscience offer them an easement to do something that we know isn't as safe as an alternative that we're willing to, that we've all endorsed and we're willing to pay for.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, I've made some comments, more comments, but...
I second what Bob Wiseboard has just said. I, again, I have brought it up before, when I sat down at this table, I was, I did not, I was not of the opinion that the roundabout was what was needed, but these gentlemen showed me the documents and explained to me how this works and why it works better, and we did a lot of work on that roundabout. This is traffic light number six, ladies and gentlemen, in that corridor. If you think you're going to get out of Thomas Flynn, you're wrong. If you think you're going to get out of Whole Foods, you're wrong. You're going to spend a lot of time in that corridor. My advice is start walking because that's our only hope, but you won't be able to cross here. And I'm sorry, I think the roundabout is just a better option for safety and control of, of the traffic. And backing up the traffic into our tunnel with the current construction is not any kind of idea I could agree with. So, there you are.
Again, I don't disagree on that part, or most of it, but the bottom line is, it's going, the traffic light is going up. So our, to me, the question before us is, if the traffic light is going up anyhow, despite everything we know, do we make it that crosswalk as, as safe as possible? The only little note I would put on that easement, if we were to move forward on it, would be, should, you know, should the traffic light be replaced with another alternative the easement may be reconsidered? Just, I don't know how that...
That language could be put in.
Yeah, I don't know how that would affect the roundabout if there was, you know, but we don't want to give an easement away, but you know?
We had a state agency, a federal agency, a regional agency, two regional agencies all say the roundabout was better. Who says that without, with the easement, it's safer? We've had all these other agencies say it's safer as a roundabout. Who's saying that with, you know, without the easement is less safe than with the easement? I just don't, I don't see it, you know? I'm looking, it's, it's, I'm looking at it, I don't get why that's safer.
Is there anyone who has something new to add?
No, that was new.
No, no.
I want to know, I want to know who says...
Additional.
Yeah.
Anything additional to add?
Well, mine, I would...
Trying to get more voices.
...concur with, with Wegbreit, when he says, I think that if we're going to add language to this, our solicitor's not here, they're asking us to make a decision right this night.
No, 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 they're not.
No, 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 no.
We're asking for direction right now.
Well, I...
But we don't need to do it soon.
I think that the roundabout is the absolute thing that we need there. We do not need a sixth light. And I'm worried about giving an easement up. I don't know how that affects the roundabout possibility down the road.
Okay.
And I also want to say, it makes me nervous that, that once they have the six lights in, they realize that it's a real problem, there, you know, I think we want to stick with our plan, which is that we need a tunnel, we need a roundabout.
I would just remind, we have some new faces. We made an application to PennDOT, it is a state road, although it is abutted by two different municipalities. PennDOT made a decision. This council disagrees, I think consensus disagrees with PennDOT's decision, but it is PennDOT's decision to make. It's the municipality's job to pay for it.
and Lower Marion, along with some of the monies coming from the development of the Marion Estate, are paying for it. It's just a point of information.
My question is, I know that, it has been said to me, that the commissioners have had a conversation, in Lower Marion, have had a conversation, that because of the reworking, I don't know if anyone's been under the tunnel on Penn Road that goes out onto Wynwood, they sort of eliminated a right-hand lane, and the community spoke up about that, those folks particularly right by the train station. It was suggested that they, that the township was going to go forward with a two-year study and then get back to them whether that particular corridor was working or not. I'm wondering if we could get some amount of timeframe like that on whether this traffic light is working in a shorter amount of time than two years.
I think we could definitely pursue that with Lower Marion and PennDOT. Maybe, I don't think there's anything preventing us from... Bob, I mean, you've worked very intimately with all parties.
You say, if this light, assuming this light, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we have, you know, from day one, if we find that there's a safety issue in any capacity, we still have control over, you know, left and right turns. We have control over certain things coming from the borough side anyhow, it's our roads. So, you know, we will study that and watch that and monitor it. Unfortunately, again, I get back to the question, and I think Bob raised a good point, is the same people who are telling us the traffic light's better than a, are also telling us the easement is better for this crossing is better than that crossing. We could, I guess our alternative would be to ask an engineer to review that for us. I don't know what we're going to find, I'm kind of reckoning, yeah, if we want to spend the money. And I don't think we'll have the timeframe. Right now, the option is, if we don't do anything about it, they'll put it in a place that they feel is less desirable for you. So that's what the default is, it's not taking any...
So maybe in next...
Just in listening to this, I feel like there are two facts that none of us have at the table. And one is, is with the easement really safer than without? I don't know, you know, I look at it and it's really hard to imagine.
Lower Marion's engineers are saying...
I know they're saying that, but it's...
That's what we're using as our...
Right. But I can't make that judgment just by looking at this. I almost think, could you even make that judgment? I mean, if both were actually built out and stood in them, that's where traffic engineers are, that's where we kind of depend on people that have expertise that way. And so then the question is just, do we want to accept what Lower Marion Township engineers say? Or do we want...
You know, and I should point out, when they did come to us, we asked traffic planning and design, and I don't remember their exact opinion, I don't remember them disagreeing on this little element. So, we could go back to them pretty modestly and get that either confirmation or difference.
Right. And then the other fact that I would say we need, I'm sorry, is what is the effect of giving this easement, you know, in the sense that, you know, if we then someday down the road were doing a roundabout, have we like lost that little piece of land and can't get it back? And that's, I think, also something that not us know at this table, yes and no.
Well, I think we can get answers to that. Are you going to ask for more detailed answers to those questions from both our solicitor and Lower Marion? Why do you believe it's so?
Right.
I think I know what they're going to say.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt to see it in writing. Go ahead, Marley.
The other final point is, we've had the meetings with the neighbors and State Representative Mary Jo Daly about the people crossing down a little further. My concern with this is how that would affect, if you're stopped at the light, your light changes and you, then you kind of got it, right? So my concern with this, and whether how that easement and how this light is going to affect, what we already know is a problem, crossing just below that.
And you can't see around that route, and that's the whole point.
And so if we're going to do anything at all, if we're going to do anything at all, we've touched on traffic calming, shortening, you know, pulling in the sides there. I feel like this is going to make that area even more dangerous.
Okay, thank you. Could we maybe ask for some answers from Lower Marion and also our solicitor regarding the easement and why Lower Marion thinks it's safer? And I think...
Thank you, Bob.
You can hit up TPD.
I think we had that exchange at one point.
So they've studied it, right, I used to know that.
And also, I would request from the solicitor the language to approve this easement. So at least, opinions aside, we can have something that we can do business with on the table and maybe come Monday night at the...
I'd also like to answer to Barbara's question of, you know, suppose we grant the easement, how easily, yeah, how easily do we do that?
And that's in how the solicitor must craft the actual easement.
Right.
Yeah, and, you know, is this, it's hard buy-in to the traffic light, put it crudely. That's what they're asking for. And in fact, the crosswalk still works, or they wouldn't build it without the easement. So, I'm suggesting that, well, that's pretty much the way I see it, is that I refuse, as one representative of this community, to buy in to a solution that we know is more dangerous. And I would hope that others might think that.
To participate.
To participate in it, even by giving easement.
Let me point out that I brought this up. This didn't come in this past three months, this came up a year ago from Lower Marion. When I heard that things were coming in, I thought, you know, I'm all, I agree that, I don't, I mean, I agree that there is a concept that it does show buy-in. I don't feel it does, I feel it does, from the other point of view, it shows a little bit of working with a neighbor from, to, you know, PennDOT, anything. I don't say we burned our bridges at PennDOT, but there certainly was some, I would pretend. And unfortunately, the Secretary of Transportation, who got involved herself to some level in the discourse, at least monitoring it, you know, I think that, you know, do we buy a little bit of goodwill there? I, that's where I think the advantage is. And I can see where you would believe the disadvantage would be, buying into this. But this did not come from them now. They're ready to go ahead on the alternative plan, which is passable, safe, but not as good as this.
What you're saying is, they asked, we answered.
And I'm bringing it up, we don't have to...
You brought it up.
We don't have to do anything, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. Because I think, I thought we did give them our answer, yeah.
We did give them an answer, but we didn't give an answer to the easement, we just gave an answer.
We did know.
That the roundabout's the only way to go.
We gave them the answer in the evening, easement, when they sat her at the table.
Right.
We did.
In that spirit of cooperation, I wonder, you know, could you have a conversation with them about, yes, after we've gotten the facts about it, if it turns out that it is the better of the two options with a traffic light going in? To say, okay, we'll give you an easement to work with you, but as part of that, can you commit to a joint study of, you know, traffic speed control and pedestrian access for that whole strip of Wynwood that runs all across South Narbit, all the way to Rockland? Because that's something we're going to have to address in the long run anyway. You know, maybe if this is, turns out to be slightly better than the alternative of the traffic lights going in anyway, and we can work together to get some commitment from you to actually do a study here and make good policy that's based on the numbers, after, you know, maybe a joint study this time. Maybe that's worth, at least trying to have that conversation.
I would, again, would like to hear from the solicitor.
All right, well, let's schedule, we'll have a brief discussion. Maybe he can give us some answers in writing, but we'll have the opportunity to ask questions Monday. I would like us to be prepared to make a decision if we choose not to act.
But as opposed to a, as opposed to a buy-in to it, maybe we could try to, Charlie said, trade for something else?
They're not asking us, I mean, they've given up.
Yeah.
It's not like, if we didn't have this discussion, they would, they would keep doing what they're doing. They don't even know, the only reason we haven't had this discussion is because I think I asked Shaun to get the status and information. But, you know, we could go along and everybody could, you know, keep going. I just thought, based on my recollection, it did have some degree of better safety and better usage, that I thought, you know, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't, it's not...
Let's move on, Windsor Avenue?
Shaun, do you want to give us a real brief update, because there's a meeting?
Yeah. The engineering firm we've contracted with to develop bid documents for the Windsor Avenue Green Street project has completed its site survey and is close to completing its sketch plans. They're going to be presenting those ideas to us in a meeting next week, and then we are going to have a public session, either on the 20th or 27th, depending on WRA's availability, open to the public, where we're going to get some feedback on those designs before they become finalized. So there'll be an opportunity for the, both the committee and the public to weigh in on what those designs will be.
Marion Estate, we've asked the solicitor to review the current building documents and construction documents, to make sure they align with the agreement. I don't think there's any updating, I think they're working on it, but he had to pull some files and such. Is there any further update there?
No, he has the settlement agreement and the escrow account agreement in hand.
Avoid all the drawings, those are drawings. So just keep on him a little bit, because we all know it's moving forward.
Traffic plan?
The traffic plan, I guess it's still out, it's RFQ, we have, the RFQ is still open on the traffic plan.
I mean, the parking study.
Parking study.
Yes, okay. Yes, it is, and we've gotten some feedback on that. Matt's been interacting with those folks and got a few bites.
The other thing that I'll bring up to the public is, one of the things we brought up at our Public Works meeting was also incorporating, we should say incorporating, talking about it. When we get people in to talk about the traffic, the parking plan is to discuss what would be involved if we also looked at bike access on some of our streets when that parking plan and study was done, because they're very similar questions that you ask, road width, directions and such. So it may make sense, I know there's, I think there's a good interest for most of the council, and I know there's a lot of community that would like to see what we can do to improve bike paths or bike access. So, you know, there are concerns about that, you know, nothing's going to really happen until we start bringing people in to discuss the RFQs they've submitted. I just want to keep that up in front of everybody. We're still talking about making the crosswalks more visible in our committee, and there's probably two phases, the first being painting, perhaps painting with even more visible type substrates, and then the second is a broader, longer look at, you know, perhaps raised crosswalks and such, which would be a bit more of an endeavor. And we haven't really done much beyond that breakup, and we're going to be getting more information on the paints and options like that from staff.
Yeah. We won't be able to actually start painting until the ground is warm enough, but we can make that, those decisions at the next committee meeting. It's probably a good time to do that.
I want to update people on the your speed signs. Matt and Shaun have developed, Matt, do you want to tell us the basics of the plan for how we'll be using those, as both traffic control and traffic damage?
Yeah. So the borough invested in those two, your speed sign, traffic monitoring, signs that control or count vehicle counts as well as average speed. And so we're in the process of developing a more, how shall we say, comprehensive look at where those deployments should be on an annual basis, so we can get traffic counts and speed counts for the entire road network within the borough. If you've noticed, we've moved those this past week. And we've also implemented a new policy with how we're going to use them, which, if you're interested, you can ask me, but I don't want to necessarily make that public, just for accuracy of recording speed and volume data. It's good to be a little bit in stealth mode sometimes, wink, wink, nudge, nudge, even though signs are not on, hey, just saying. So, we've, because that enables us to benchmark it and then see what the effect is when we turn the speed sign on, and then benchmark it afterwards as well. So, we're applying that right now, we're going to be, we've moved it to two different spots, and we're actively monitoring that with that new theory. We're going to see how it works.
Shade Tree Commission, I sent the members of council a copy of a letter that I got late this afternoon from Fred Hansel. Very encouraging, lots of detail. They're going to be, the bottom line is, they're going to be meeting Wednesday, April 13th, at 7 o'clock here. And we'll have the two new members of the Shade Tree Commission, but they have a lot of things they'd like to do. And I recommend, you know, you read this because they are going to want money on some of these items. One of the things I'll save for the, I'll bring up now, but we can discuss at the end of the committee reports, is the concept of, I guess maybe just confirming, historically, the Shade Tree Commission is kind of reported through the Public Works Committee. And I don't know if we've, if that's cemented in our rules of council or not, but I think we should, you know, as we are trying to utilize more committees and enable them more, empower them more, is what I would, you know, these committees do not have spending power, they don't have power to introduce an ordinance. So ideally, what happens is each committee would align with a committee of council, so we would both be monitoring, attending, and then if there are actions that they feel that should be done and the committee agrees with them, then the committee can bring it forward to get funding or any ordinances. So I was hoping that we take a look at all the committees, all the commissions, and align them somehow with the committee for that purpose, but, you know, let's hold that conversation to the...
Yeah, we discussed that, and I think maybe I will propose a suggested assignment, and then everyone can have a look at it and see where it goes from there.
Sidewalk and curb inspections, we have, we did an initial discussion on that. It's a lot deeper of a topic than just doing it. There's different levels of safety, look, different levels of quality, you know, where we, historically, the use of occupancy permit requires a very high level of quality versus a safety issue, where it's a trip and fall concern. And so if we are to do inspections, we have to recognize, you know, what level we're looking for as opposed to the, I guess, the property transfer level as opposed to use of occupancy. So we asked, we just had an initial discussion, we asked Shaun to walk around the borough aimlessly once a month or once a week, to kind of get us to take, because the reality is, if we ask everybody to get to the sidewalk level that we have been historically on the use of occupancy, it could affect a heck of a lot of properties.
Yes.
And most of those properties will probably be homeowners that have been with the borough longer since their house hasn't turned over.
Yes.
So that's, and some of those expenses are pretty good.
It's a concern.
If it's a safety issue, obviously, we want to jump on that, because you don't want trip and fall. The last thing I have on my list is the paving plan and the gas lines. One thing we should publicize to the community is, and I don't know what the timeframe is, but it's the spring or summer, PGW will be replacing gas lines, PICA will be replacing gas lines, excuse me, in much of the borough.
On the south side.
The entire south side. And when they do that, we have, they will repave half of the street. Our question is twofold, first, to make sure if somebody wants a gas line that doesn't have one, it's probably an inexpensive opportunity while those gas lines are, you know, the street is being dug up, they would have to pay the cost from the street to their house and whatever else PICA might charge, but, so that's something people should be aware of. The bigger question for council is, we can do probably one of three things. We can let them come in, do their work, repave half the street, recognizing that the other half of the street will be in whatever condition it is currently. Or we can try to do what we've done with the Aqua PA of repaving the whole street, only paying for half the street, and hopefully, as we did a lot of the, also getting a better rate than if we had, you know, tagging along at a better rate. It's a large amount of streets, larger than we normally repay, so if we were to do that, Shaun's going to start looking at some numbers for us.
Yeah, I'm in contact with the paving contractor to get an estimate. And just so council knows, it's, what we're contemplating is paving half of 20, half of around 15% to 20% of the borough roads. So do your math in your head, a road should last, if it's well cared for, 20 years. So this is really an accelerated capital improvement plan, really brought about by this infrastructure improvement. So this is a bigger outlet than we would normally do, but it's being prompted by this infrastructure update, and something to consider whether or not we want to pay for that now. And we should make that choice.
We would pay, no.
We should make that choice with data.
With data, I was going to suggest data as to the condition of each individual road that we're considering, because there's a blended solution also.
That's right.
We don't have to do, actually, we traditionally have done that, I know Conway and, you know, which was not good, just because of the age of the other half, being young enough that we, wasn't, didn't look perfect, but, you know. Anyway, do we plan on assembling that?
Yeah.
And we'll take a look at it.
I'm sorry, did you say when they were going to start this work, or like the word, the buzzes?
Work is going to start on East Wynwood Road in April and May. However, crews will not, crews will not be in Norbert Borough itself until July. You'll see the work performed between July and October and then the finishing and repaving will happen in October and November. And there's a limit to how late in the year you can pave because of the temperature, but they, they suggest they'll, should all be done before the cold weather sets in.
This year.
But not done before we all come back from summer vacation. And back to school.
Did the gas lines follow the winter lines? Because it seems like it's strange that we had the whole borough ripped up two years ago and now we're ripping it up again and I don't think we're coordinating.
That was a topic in the meeting and I don't think we have that opportunity on, in this locations of doing the gas update to coordinate because I believe the water has already been updated.
Yep.
Noted. Anything else for Public Works or Public Works?
I think we discussed this in, I can't remember if it was Finance Administration or Public Works, because Bob and I are both committee. But there, there's been a little public notice that the office put out about the parking system update. And I think that's been a major project that's been invisible to a lot of folks, but definitely not invisible to the office who have been spending an awful lot of time and energy on it and I think it's getting toward a good outcome. That's putting in place a, a new system for parking tickets, monitoring enforcement and then sort of post the ticket being written, escalating it to the, to the county courts and replacing a very old system that we had in-house. And hopefully with this automation, removing a lot of manual handling that both our parking enforcement officer and our, our bookkeeper, Leslie, have been doing. It's been a very big project to get to this point and all of the members of the office, including Robin, our parking enforcer, enforcement officer, have been very heavily involved in doing it. A lot of good work to date and I think it's getting closer to implementation. Actually, it is implemented.
It is, I was going to say.
As of yesterday afternoon.
That's in production, not just.
So, yeah, so this has been like three months of my life. And it's mostly Robin and I.
Thank you, Robin.
Weekly conference calls with the developer. It's just been a great learning experience for both of us, I shall say.
Good.
We're really excited. It was, it was touch and go there for a while, but yesterday, everything came together pretty quickly with, you know, had to manage everything from designing the ticket itself to ordering the print stock to everything. I did it, right? So never done that before, so here we go. We got it online, the developer was really responsive. It went live yesterday at 11:00. I checked before the meeting tonight, Robin has issued 61 tickets already. So she's a quick learner. The awesome thing about it is that it's all cloud-based and so we have, we can analyze the data, location, frequency, you name it. I've also processed tickets in-house, so that whole payment technology. So we're rolling it out in phases. We are where we were with issuing paper tickets. The next hurdle is to get online processing, which I was hoping to complete today. We're still working on a couple of kinks, hopefully that will be live tomorrow where, wow, e-commerce in Norbert Borough. Pay your parking ticket online, that's the next step. The third step is to then transfer it into state citations. If you want to know more and really get into the weeds with me, I'd be happy to talk.
Thank you. Anything else in Public Works?
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Property, Council Vice Board.
Property Committee, I have some notes about the Property Committee meeting that was held last month and then, and I'd like to offer some of what we've discussed and then I think I will toss the discussion of the Library Terrace Project over to you, Council President, and our Borough Manager, about what's going on with the Library Terrace Project.
Sure.
So the Property Committee met last month, we discussed a proposal to create a building use policy for this building first. And there's basically, the kinds of users fall into three categories. There's the government, the police officers, the associations, the commissions, the council, but there are also clubs, like the Cub Scouts, the political clubs. And then there are occasional users who are people who like, want to have parties or anniversary parties or birthday parties or dances. So we discussed how we could create a policy that could accommodate all of these different groups and we started with a kind of boilerplate that our solicitor provided to us from another municipality. And we looked at how, how the, both the needs of these kind of occasional users could be accommodated without interrupting the needs that the boards and commissions and the political people have for, mostly Monday through Thursday uses. So we decided we would recommend that we make the borough buildings available mostly Friday through Sunday for the occasional users, the parties and the anniversaries, those kinds of things that might involve caterers or, or kind of commitments with vendors so that if there were a need for the council or commission to meet, it wouldn't interrupt those kinds of occasions. But we also, we also discussed the need to create a policy for long-term users. We currently use leases at the Sabine Avenue property, but we have long-term uses, users of the 201, I mean of Conway Avenue building as well. So that we'll be looking at that next. We're concerned with creating policy for temporary storage, some kind of maintenance or fee requirement that's proportional, policies for reserving space and requirements that users hold insurance, especially if they're here on a more ongoing basis. Bunny Nardi presented us with some concerns about the Girl Scout meeting of the community building and I believe Matt West offered to walk through the building and discuss how our policies might impact their use of that space. There are currently, I don't know, several community organizations that all use the Girl Scout room and actually use it for storage. So, so I think the Borough Office is going to be looking at how to provide appropriately for the storage needs of the various community groups while making the space itself available to the Girl Scouts and other, other organizations that might wish to use it appropriately. No policy currently exists in the borough for, on storage of property within the borough buildings. So we know there are other organizations, but we don't really have any kind of guidelines for how things are kept here. And we will begin to look at those things, that issue. The next property meeting, meeting will take place on April 28th, I believe, but you may be appointing a new chair, so I'll resume my role as vice chair. Charlie, do you want to add anything to our discussion, our meeting discussion?
I do. We talked, I think the baseline was for that discussion of policies, by and large, things work mostly okay in terms of spaces. There are some things that don't. And I think the goal here is to try to provide a framework and a written set of documents that describe what the working arrangements are, the buildings, and try to, you know, fix any problems that might exist. And so it's going to, it's going to be an iterative process and that's why we started with this building because it's, A, the least encumbered, it's B, the one that we can get the most direct feedback from the office and from the current users on, kind of the current situation. And then we'll walk our way over to the other, the other building. The one other thing we talked about real briefly at the end, because we didn't have it on the agenda then, was similar to Public Works looping in the Shade Tree Commission a little bit more. There's a bunch of stuff that this committee didn't really, we got sideswiped a little bit by our commercial property last year and there was some stuff we didn't get to around parks and rack planning and some planning for the other buildings. And we've come to the epiphany and have been led there a little bit by the rec, you know, some folks on the rec board to say, we're really not using the rec board as much as we could. And I think starting with our next meeting, we want to start looping them in, assist some rec board member, members in the, in the room tonight.
That's good.
Yeah.
So, so is some, currently I know that some of the spaces in the borough, if a citizen wants to use the Girl Scout room, they call the office and Leslie checks a chart, sometimes she has to call Bunny, is that takes less, are we looking at how we?
Calendar.
Calendar those, those spaces? Is that part of your discussion? Because I know Leslie has a lot and.
That'll be part of it.
Okay.
We will be, we haven't had this on our agenda for foreseeable near future and, and I think though we'll be bringing a complete policy that wraps all of the properties together, including its, yeah, scheduling procedure in the coming month or two.
How long have little things like, is that part of the schedule?
No.
Can you get that in charge or just run it in?
Yeah.
That's all. So I just, I think I'll turn the discussion of the Library Terrace over to Borough Manager and to Council President.
Mr. Metzger, could you tell us where we stand?
Sure. The lowest qualified bidder was PNS Incorporated with a base bid of $237,500 and change. The total bid was about $243,000 and change. We got very close, but we did not, we're not able to come to a agreement on the contract that was contained in the bid. The bidder asked for the borough to alter the contract and under advisement from our solicitor, the borough did not alter the contract. Therefore, the agreement could not be reached between us and the lowest responsible bidder. Therefore, council has two options to go with the next lowest qualified bidder or to rebid the project. The next lowest qualified bidder for the project, including the alternate of steps that council agreed to, would be a total of roughly $351,000, which is about 25% more than the lowest qualified bidder. We had five bids on the Library Terrace Project, the other three bids were all north of half a million dollars. So I, council's choice, council's decision, but the office's recommendation here is to just to look at rebidding this project and seeing if we can fix the stumbling block that was in the contract agreement that went out as part of the last bid and correct a few things that are in the plan set that came to light as we went through this process and see if we can't get a bunch of qualified bids that are in the low range that we can choose from and then council can make a informed choice at that point.
Is council under any obligation to send this out for rebid?
No.
Let me just make one brief comment before we get into, because I, okay, why I communicated with the solicitor, but you're on that, the solicitor suggested that we discuss in executive session what rights we may have with the, with the qualified bidder, or they may, whatever the difference, the second qualified bidder, they may be responsible for that or not, but we recommended we discuss that in executive session.
Yeah, we can do that in executive session for sure. We'll add that to the agenda for tonight's executive session.
I probably want to do it with him there because he's, he was going to give us, he was looking into information on that.
All right, well, we'll cycle that into Monday night.
I didn't want to go too far in this discussion at this point.
Is there a consensus that this can wait until Monday night to be discussed?
Yes.
All right.
Sure, we can go on.
Building and zoning, Council Vice Board.
Building zoning meeting was very brief. We basically reviewed the subdivision and land development application for 198 Elmwood Avenue. It's comprised of a scheme that would, would build three townhomes, party wall townhomes and.
Two twins.
Oh, two twins.
Two twins. One set of two, one set of three.
Yeah, so, and then on the corner of two.
Yeah, two family dwelling on the corner and a three family dwelling.
So, and then, and then obviously that has, that's referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation to council. There are other items on our agenda for some review and discussion. First is just the announcement with the public hearing for the zoning code or chapter 124 replacement of our borough code. The hearing will be held on April 28th. And is that at 8:00 PM?
Correct.
And we will also, on that same evening, have a public hearing for the flood plain conservation district, which is a portion of the zoning ordinance, zoning code as well. The fourth item is a discussion of historic preservation initiative. It's, we were, the Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission employs consultants who work with municipalities all throughout the state. Ours, the consultant with the Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission that works in Montgomery County's name is Corey Brige.
Gegeris.
Gegeris. Gegerise, R-I-S-E. And he has offered, through a liaison with the Lower Merion Conservancy, to help our planning commission, help our council or help our planning commission devise a set of best practices that the planning commission could recommend to council on, on how to best manage our inventory of historic buildings within the borough. It's a fairly complex topic. There are ideas that other communities have used from voluntary listings of properties, which he told me that he doesn't particularly recommend, although it is something that some of our neighbors would like to do, all the way to the creation of a historic commission within, or architectural kind of board. And kind of every, many ideas in between. So I, I kind of just wanted to put this out for discussion. I, I think it would be a benefit for our community, for the council, to ask our planning commission to meet with this gentleman and with assistance from the Lower Merion Commission, Caspian Afflaloff, to discuss strategies for kind of, the implementation of some kind of historic planning initiative and see what they, see if they'd like, would work for them, kind of come together.
We're kind of in a brainstorming mode?
In a kind of brainstorm, maybe in a, in a, in a learning mode.
Okay.
Learning about what's possible in, given the nature of our community.
Kind of a teach-in on what the options are.
Teach-in, yeah. We could all participate, members of the community could participate, but I would suggest that we would want our planning commission to be at the center of that discussion because if we were to develop policies, they, they would be the ones kind of working those through.
Okay.
We also are fortunate that on our planning commission are people who have been involved with this issue for almost 30 years. I see Dave Brower in the audience here, he's, he's, he's been particularly interested in protecting the historical assets within Norbert for, for at least three decades and so I think it's the appropriate place for the discussion to begin.
Council Richmond.
Okay. So we definitely, I support the idea of us doing something that provides to a historic preservation discussion, teach-in or whatever. But what I, what I want to know is what we are doing, with the planning commission being the center of that, my concern is that would then, I guess, rise to the top of their agenda and as we move through form based, and assuming it passes and that's no longer what they're focused on, how do we, we don't have a strategic plan, we don't have a list of priorities, we don't have, and the planning commission theoretically would be the center of that. So my concern is, how do we, is it better to pull from their group and create a historic group that could head up the, this quest? Or how do we assign priorities to the planning commission with regard to McCauley Avenue or whether or not we're going to look at the downtown or any other, or even creating a strategic plan? Montgomery County will do a strategic plan for us for no, virtually no money because we already have a contract with them, but they're not going to do it at the same time they're doing. they're doing that form-based. So, my question is, how do we establish these priorities and how do we set floors that for the planning commission?
So, I've given this some thought and I, the, the, the issues are interconnected. So, historic preservation initiative has to be rooted in a strategic plan, it has to be rooted in the set of community objectives. It is probably time for the planning commission to go back and review again the community objectives, the strategic plan, and, and build, build on to that.
Well, we don't have one. We don't even have one. We have an old open space plan, we don't have a plan for what.
We have, we have standard of community objectives.
And that's not a strategic.
I hear, I hear you.
I hear you. So, I, I, so, and in thinking about the planning commission, I, I think that they're, they're, first of all, they're a seven-member, seven-member body, we could make them larger. They are capable of, I think, just advising us as to their capacity to manage several issues at one time. And if they have, you know, obviously, they're working with the borough managers as well to decide, you know, they have to deal with subdivision applications, they have to deal immediate zoning concerns, that they, their agenda will have to flex and, and to, to the tasks that they have to perform, but, I mean, if we could take Kimberly Beazac's suggestion that we create a seven-member body, a nine-member body and have three teams working, if, if, if they're, if they're capable and interested in doing that, I mean, this is a volunteer community, we have those resources available to us, that's, would be my suggestion. Is to let them decide what.
Well, I think if we're just going to have a discussion with, you said, there's this name, I'm sorry.
The Philadelphia Historic, the Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Museum, Historic Museum Commission.
If we're going to invite you for a discussion and, and have everybody in a room, I think then the next step is to figure out what.
What we do.
What the level of engagement is from the community or from council or from the planning commission and then we can go on from there. I, I think, I think the public discussion or the discussion to have this person guest in the room and to have everybody sort of say what their level of involvement is and whether this is even something a majority of, or I don't even know if a majority, but enough people are interested to, to pursue and how we're going to pursue that. And if they're going to just present us with the options of how it could work for Norbert, I think that's the first step. And then we would, you know, big, hammer out what we would need from there, whether that's an expansion or whether that's a combination of citizens and professionals or, or folks from the planning commission. I think, I think just to have the discussion and see what's available is the first step.
I'd like to call on Tom, any other council members first?
Now, just in the past, we've had much excessive ad hoc committees, set them up and appoint the people on it and let the plan commission do what they do best, let the ad hoc committee work on this project exclusively and then adopt.
I think Council Richmond raises another good point. We've had this, they have had a really in the room for many years. What's the timing of having that meeting? You don't know?
They're, they're available in May, June, July.
Well, I, I would feel to have that meeting sooner than later, get some information and then council can have an agenda item, hopefully sooner than later, once, as soon as this code moves off the table, of what those priorities are, what is the next step for our planning commission. I do think it should be a council-wide, well-thought-out discussion with number one, number two, number three, because we have a wealth of resources on the planning commission and we should use them wisely and also the county relationship that we've developed over many years. So, that's, that's my sense of how to.
And the ad hoc committee, if that is something we pursue, would give us an opportunity to bring some more people in. I'm not opposed to enlarging the planning commission, especially if we're going to be keeping them, lots of work to do. But I think that we really need to set, set priorities and, and then kind of.
That's job one. And then we can figure out how to, how to flesh it out, whether we create an ad hoc commission so that unelected individuals serve in that role, or whether it's an ad hoc committee of Borough Council, or a committee of Borough Council guiding that commission, you know, there's a lot of different ways we can structure it and a lot of different people.
And a strategic plan would be like the big thing and then the historic and whatever. So, could we also ask them to bow up with the Montgomery County Planning Commission on what the cost would be, if any? I believe there is virtually no cost to doing that, if it's sequential to form-based.
And what we would get.
Yes.
I want to bring up the timeframe factor. The agenda has been set, we're in April. Sorry, I don't, I don't, I know you guys are busy. I'm not, I'm not sure, and, and that's all I want to say, is I know we've had this conversation and charts were given to us about what the priorities for each committee and what we're trying to do, but I don't, I, I just don't want to say, hey, you guys, you know, check with the planning commission and get that done and then we'll start that all over again. I just want to be clear in what, what we're asking from both the historic people, from the community, from the planning commission and from the office. I just want to be clear about that, that we're, we're not going down a road that maybe we can't get your support on, but I'm not talking, I'm not speaking for you.
No, I mean, and, and I think the purpose of bringing this up is not, is to have it on the table.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not that it's going to happen next time, but it's for the out-years, we need to be doing this.
Well, that's, I agree.
It's a shame that it took, it's a shame that it takes the demolition of the, the loss of this church for our community to be fully awake to the issues that Mr. Brower has been sort of singing from the rooftops for like three decades in this, and now, and now we've, you know, here we are.
Well, I think the community has engaged on this, oh, for a while now, on different properties and around Norbert, so I don't think that's quite.
So, let's, let's collect information.
The council certainly has done nothing.
Well, he's.
Let's collect information, let's set up that meeting with the Historic Museum Commission.
We'll see when they can come and coordinate that with the planning.
We're going to ask the county for information about what a strategic plan development looks like, what the deliverable looks like, they can send us what they've made for other municipalities.
Yeah, the whole, so we have something like that.
I'm going to set on the agenda for June, a caucus discussion for us to kind of figure out of all of those priorities, where they might fall, and we can have that discussion if there's other big picture, large projects that fall into the kind of planning mission, 20-year vision, 30-year vision. I would love it if you could email me those ideas and I'll put them on the agenda.
And that'd be one where probably we want to get those to you soon, so that those to the planning commission, so that they can, they already have a view on time commitments and thoughts.
As soon as that. Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
One more thing for the zoning.
Yes, sir.
Don't want to keep on to this, the things that we heard from Yerkeys tonight, I think they're smaller topics, but would like to see us, you know, address them. Looking at perhaps utilizing them for property transfer inspections, formerly known as using.
I wrote that down, yeah.
Housing, housing code for rentals and rental license.
Rental unit inspection.
Really would like to see us, you know, again, a lot of us shouldn't take that much from the planning commission, more from our professionals. So, you know.
All three of those items are on the radar of the borough staff. You know, as they are, when they get to those things, we'll, we'll be the first to know that those are going to be implemented.
So documented. Okay, thank you. Economic Development, Council Richmond.
Economic Development is one of our top priorities. When we last met was to raise crosswalks and that would be to provide, to slow traffic down, to make it pedestrians more visible, both to give them more visibility, they can see cars better and also cars can see that better. And we talked with Sean and Matt about looking into the possibility of grants for those things and they were also looking at the painting. So, obviously the painting is cheaper, it's quicker, we can get that done and, but we'll see if we can for next year get ourselves involved with grant money for that.
Okay. Okay, great. Anything else for economic development?
No.
Session planning, anything?
We did meet the Borough Manager, it was kind of more, it was more of a finance.
Kind of both.
Whatever, then basically went through what we're going to be looking for in the review process. We didn't do a formal review, we were kind of calibrating how we want that to look and what things, so come our second meeting in three months, we will start to quantify some things and action steps and such.
Okay, thank you for the update. A few announcements, we will be, I believe, considering a resolution Monday night to potentially change the, the timing of our recurring council and caucus meetings. This was a request that actually began from the office, but seemed to make a lot of sense and since this is a working session, although we won't be voting on anything tonight, maybe you could discuss what the proposal would look like?
Caucus meetings being first Wednesdays, so that wouldn't change, but council business meetings being third Wednesdays. There's two reasons to think this one, to, to think this is a better solution, because it gives us more time between council, between caucus and regular business meetings to prepare. We talked about things that have to be on Monday tonight's agenda today, so we have three working days to get those done. This instead would give us two weeks to get those things done. It also extends the time that the office has to prepare the schedule of bills and can get it to council members a week ahead of the meeting, so you have more time to review it, because of those meetings where the first, actually the second Monday falls close to the beginning, that's a very tight fit. Plus, by spacing it out by two weeks, we can advertise anything you want to do in the suburban newspaper, I forget the name of the.
Mayland Times.
Not Mayland, sorry, not Mayland Times, the other one. You guys have the wrong deadline for us.
The Intellencer?
No, sorry. Suburban Daily News, sorry. That's a newspaper of general circulation in our area, we can advertise on a Thursday, following your caucus meeting, get it in the paper ahead of time. So, things that you decide you want to enact, not, not zoning ordinances, but things you want to enact can be adverted and voted on within two weeks' time instead of four weeks' time. So, for those reasons, we thought it was something to suggest.
I would, I would add that by spacing out our official meetings throughout the month, things that happen don't necessarily, sometimes they unfortunately happen when we are three weeks away from a meeting. And then we either have to pay money for a special meeting to advertise it and everybody throws their schedules around. In this case, it's just less likely that something's going to happen at a time when we're not just about to meet. And I think that is better. And also, I think spreading them out over the month, while it may help our schedules, you know, less crunch towards the beginning of the month, I think it also helps the public to come to more meetings because they're not just on a big crunch. So, I'm excited about it and I guess now would be the opportunity for any brief discussion. I mean, we don't need to spend a half hour on this.
But we also, earlier talked about possibly changing the time of the meeting, start time is that.
We're going to change to 7:30.
7:30.
I don't know what.
Yes, that's what we were proposing, yes, 7:30, as opposed to these 8 o'clock, 7:30 seems to be a little bit easier on the office.
And I will do everything in my power to make sure we don't just gobble up that extra half hour as the sun, you know, rotates underneath the earth.
I might suggest, I'm, I.
Yeah, Charlie, I had it.
Heads up on this, that the, doing them both on the same night of the week might not be optimal, because you might have people who've got, you know, kids who've got Cub Scouts every Wednesday and actually never come to a meeting. If you stagger it and do one on Wednesday and one on Monday like we do now, the space might be.
Yes.
Probably catch people. If you're not, after the jail, it's going to catch me, but you wouldn't.
Yeah, so.
I think Sean had a desire not to have it on a Monday.
Okay.
So, that the Borough Office has more time once the week begins to kind of.
Right.
That's another factor I didn't mention.
I'm open.
I think the, the two different days is really important. For most organizations, they find that they do get different people.
So, just for an example, in May, it would be May 4th, Wednesday, take a look at your calendars. And then what we had suggested at the beginning of the discussion was the 18th, but instead it would be the 17th. Let's go to Tuesday, May. How about Thursday, the 19th? Right, we're taking, there's only so many days in the week here.
Monday is, one of the issues is that, Monday is also, I don't even know how to say it, but lots of other groups have their meetings Tuesdays and Thursdays, lots of other organizations.
So, you would, you would like to have the meeting, you would suggest Monday?
I think Monday is the safest day for the other day that they need.
Okay. Well, why don't we take those suggestions?
We're moving it two weeks, right? So, we're changing it, so you still have the time.
Yes, yes, no, there's still time. We'll take that, let's take that back and then Monday, we'll have something in writing and we can obviously continue to discuss, it doesn't need to be advertised as an ordinance.
The thing is, are we changing anything about the, I guess, July, August, September?
I think the goal was to continue to consolidate them.
Two, one meeting.
Last year.
The law requires only one meeting.
Right. The law, the law requires one meeting per month. We generally consolidate, last year we didn't because we had a lot on our plate. And we'll kind of, we'll handle that ad hoc.
Right, we had those on the hands, right to us.
Okay.
The latest thing to think about is minutes. You know, I know we, right now, we approve the minutes of the prior, both meetings in the prior month.
Split it.
Next month. If we're split, I mean, Dyance does now, but think about how the cadence of getting meetings transcribed, circulated and approved would work if you had staggered meetings or two weeks.
I mean, the benefit to the public potentially could be the minutes are available sooner.
Right.
Potentially, if they're approved.
The timing actually works.
But you guys should actually have that.
Good point.
Very good stuff. Another announcement, Planning Commission Chair Jim Cornwell was in a pretty serious car accident over the Easter weekend. I hear he's on the mend, getting some nods. He's back in the borough, out of the hospital, so we wish him good well soon. Also, a point of information, I and Vice President Ted Lynn-Muffet met with the Superintendent of Lower Merion Schools today. And Board President Van Lynch, and we had a very nice conversation, kind of talking, you know, they, they expressed to us what's happening in the school district, which is a dramatic growth in the number of students that they must educate, the pressures that they are facing in that regard on all fronts. And we, we listened.
And we listened. It was nice, it was positive, it wasn't.
This is my takeaway, in 2006, there were 6,400 students in the district, today I think it's 80.
I express my appreciation, counsel, for the discussion on the roundabout. I've always been a supporter of the roundabout idea and I am actually surprised to be the article of the May Night Times that the traffic light is in fact going to be installed. And would appreciate if council could, in their discussions with Lower Merion Township, let us know as Norbert citizens why they think that the traffic light is a good solution, given, again, all the traffic lights that are in that, and why it's safer. Moving down the wheel row, second to rear, to us or the tax.
Yeah, how you doing? Steve Durico, forward to North Essex Avenue. First of all, I wanted to congratulate Barbara. So, I think you guys have been a great, great choice. Second thing I want to say is I support the historical preservation action that you guys are taking and discussions you guys are initiating on that, so thank you for that. I had a question about the terrace and I was just kind of curious as to, you know, how much money has been allotted or budgeted for the terrace and, and, you know, is it 250,000? And if so, you know, how, how is that number determined? I'll sit down and listen.
The, the dollars to, to pay for the terrace would have to be, come out of a borrowing, you know, that the borough would have to issue this year. The budget for the terrace has expanded, I think, as the terrace has come into focus and as we've gotten bids on it. I remember discussions last year of a much smaller number, maybe half the lowest responsible bidder, and it's just, it has crept up since then. And now that we have the bids in, we have five representative bids and we have a better, we have a clearer idea of what it's going to cost. we have a clearer idea of what it's going to cost.
So I guess, my next question would be, what, what happens, you get the bids, and then, I mean, do you guys vote to say yes, like, go ahead and borrow the money for it?
That would be, imagine that this, this bidder went forward.
Right.
Kind of normal, typical bid process, we choose a little bit. And then, it would come upward and we would go out and get a note from a bank to borrow that money.
We already have a line.
Yeah. We, that's correct, last year.
We have a line of credit.
We just haven't taken, we just haven't drawn down the funds. But that would be kind of the way that it would happen on a capital project, or it could come out of a capital account, depending on what the project was and how much it was, and what the interest rate was.
Right, okay. I mean, is that open for public discussion, or is that, does that happen?
Well, I would love to hear your thoughts. You can present them here in public forum, you can always reach out to any of us individually. I don't know that we're going to have a, a back and forth about it this evening.
Sure.
And I, I'd note that one thing we'll want to talk about with the solicitor, and we'd also probably want to clarify publicly, is how interrelated this terrace project is with Windsor Avenue Green.
The grant money.
And the grant money that we've gotten for that other project. So as we, as we think about how to proceed with this bid, we're going to be talking to the solicitor about that and the office, more make sure we really wrap our heads around how the terrace and the Windsor Avenue Green project. I always get the name of that thing wrong. This sort of green street project with the, with the stormwater runoff rerouting of that environmental education. It's got a grant tied to that, but it's all kind of part of the same project. I think the guy sitting next to you may have some good history on how that all came together.
I have a check here.
Okay.
Mr. Brower, did you have any comment?
Mr. Brower, coming around, front row, front row. Oh, it's Ned.
Me first?
Yeah.
I'm Kimberly Ned. I live at 407 Dudley Avenue, it's the best block in the borough. I would like to float the idea of potentially doing some sort of communications committee. If not a committee, maybe just, I could help on a volunteer basis. I think that there are a lot of really simple things that we could do to better communicate to the residents here. And one of the reasons I'm thinking about this right now is the library terrace. I'm a little upset about it. I feel like this time last year, I asked for information about it, and I was told, you know, there's a flyer outside the library on the bulletin board, and outside of the train station bulletin board, and that was really it. And between now and then, maybe I was neglectful in not seeking out more information. I didn't go online and read the meeting minutes or the agendas, but the next time I really feel like anything came across my desk, it's, the terrace is happening. And at first I saw, oh, it's happening, and I was really excited, and then I saw more developed plans for it. And my personal opinion is I think it's sort of hideous, and I don't really understand the goals. It's really just an extension of the steps around the side of the building. I don't really understand how it's enhancing or bettering the library or the playground area, how it fits into the overall strategic plan for that area. I understand the natural connection between the library and the playground. I'm a mom, I take my kids to the library, then we hit the playground, and then we walk home. If, there's a natural connection. I'm sort of hoping, hoping for more of an opening of the community room, AKA Girl Scout room, and I don't really understand why it's just steps up to a brick wall, and I was hoping for more of an opening up of that space. So just again, about the communication, I, I probably should have attended more meetings, but I feel like all of a sudden it's happening, and I don't really understand why. Also, about the community room and the property issue, the property committee issues as far as access to that room. This time last year, I was trying to get access to that room for the Norbert Moms and Dads Children's Clothing Swap, and I had a really hard time doing it. It took coming to meetings, making phone calls, sending emails to be able to do that. And that access to the public space issue was on the agenda then. So I'm just curious, I don't place blame on anyone, I understand everybody's really busy, but I'm just curious, like, why it's still on the agenda now, and there's been no progress there, really? And I just want to remind everyone that the Girl Scouts only use that room 8% of the time, as far as my analysis from the calendar of last year, 8%. And we also said, at the time we discussed it last year, we were going to review the actual deed of that building, where the Girl Scouts are written in, they're supposed to be able to use that room. Also, on the other side is Legion. And at that meeting that we attended, I stood up here and I discussed it with the property committee, and we said we were going to look and see, like, legally, what's going on here? What's, what are the rules and what can we say? And I, I'm curious what happened. Yes.
Well, I can actually tell you, I have the property committee.
I know the dates were reviewed.
Yeah, no, so we did, we did look into, we had the solicitor look into the, what the Borough has committed to on both of those rooms. That's going to figure into our, our property use policy. That's also one of the reasons we're tackling this building first, because they don't have any of that attached to it. And, you know, you have some space here too, for those kind of events. But it's on the agenda, it was on the agenda last year too, and we got, to be totally honest, 100% sideswiped by the 201 Sabine re-leasing, which we did our very best to hand entirely over to our property manager and kept coming back to this. So fortunately, that is basically quit to bed. We've got a new property manager in place who's managing that property, and so far working really well with the office, and returning our, now that that's behind us as a committee, returning our attention to the stuff that we kind of had to put on the back burner last year.
Okay.
So yeah, that's, that's on us a little bit, but it did suck up. So that building sucked up like 300% of our attention.
Right, I totally get that. And then, the other thing is, just as far as the overall strategic plan for the area, where the library is and the playground, so at the time last year, it was right around when I was talking about getting access to the community room next to the library, there was this public discussion about the playground and the sand, is it good, is it bad? And I came to a meeting and we talked about, there was, we were due for a 10-year assessment of the playground area, and I was just curious if that was on the agenda as well.
It's, it's back on the agenda.
It is, and, and, and it's part of the reason that we want to see the recreation more involved in making assessments about what's needed, and having advisors on what's kind of, what are priorities.
Right. Because we haven't had, we haven't had, as you said, like, a plan. There's the open space plan, which talks about, in general, what, you know, and makes some suggestions about what to do with that, that area, and if the, we have this passive recreation. But it's, it's a fairly high-level plan, and there needs to be work done and public comment on how do you fill that in, and also some specific work done on coordinating and suggesting to the office and trying to round up some co-funding for things that would fit into that plan, like Candy Cane City and like the Tensport Resourcing. And that, what we sort of realized as we were finally coming out of the fog of, so the Sabine Avenue building was, hang on a minute, we have a rec board that has a bunch of very talented committed members on it, and, you know, shame on us as a committee for not, like, tasking them with that, right? Because that's kind of what they, you know, that's, that's Parks and Rec. We've got a group of people who can focus on that, come back with a plan, and do for that purpose what the planning commission does for bigger ones. And so that's, that's why this is kind of.
I would just like to add that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I, I just wanted to add that towards the end of last year, I attended, I think, Shade Tree, and Shade Tree Commission at that time had some questions and comments about the trees in that specific area. And not, not just the trees that came down, but like the root exposure, and what was happening with, around Chet Tyson and some of the smaller trees, those skinnier trees that are back there, and then the trees that were adjacent to Candy Cane City. And I do know that they are going to talk about our parks and those trees at their next meeting on April 13th at 7 o'clock. So it may be a conversation that folks would attend to hear about how that's going to fit into the larger picture of, of that area, of the park.
Thank you.
Here, in the large, here, in this building, April 13th.
Okay, and thank you all for everything.
Ms. Launster?
Deborah Launster, 128 Chestnut. I, I, a couple comments. One quick one, the money, we're getting money from like the Marion State project, and that was maybe going to go into the roundabout, which we can't do right now. So are we using that for anything, for that traffic light situation? Do we have to use that up, or do we get to hang on to that for maybe?
There's two pockets of money. That pocket's all about the Borough. We'll, we'll have to choose the choice when we get that money. Shouldn't be that long, but unfortunately, because that means the developments are coming, but that is, the, the roundabout money would have been a separate decision by council, either ready to spend the money, that just wasn't, whether it would have come from that or whatever, it really didn't affect our decision.
There were two pockets of money. One was for a roadway improvement that would be required at that intersection, goes with the process move forward. And the other was basically a settlement, dollar amount with the Borough. That just goes to the general fund for a settlement.
So if they didn't need to put a traffic light in, or if they didn't choose to, it was wrong word, that, so that money will go to, the Lower Marion Township is paying zero for that traffic light.
And we're, are we paying?
We're not paying anything either.
Okay.
So, but that's coming from the Marion money.
They could have used for the roundabout.
So, thank you, yeah. Okay, I just was curious about that. The library terrace, most people I've talked to, and I felt the same thing, it sounded like a nice idea, but then when it got to be like quarter of a million dollars, and I'm kind of like shocked at these other estimates. Is, is there something else going on there that I'm not aware of? Because quarter of a million dollars for patios just seems like nuts. You know, I mean, I can, I can landscape my entire backyard really, really well and not spend anything close to that. So what's going on that brought our cost up to that? Is there like a structure?
I don't know that anybody knows what it is about the design that brought the costs, the bids, as high as they did. I've got Mr. Brower's.
I'm asking, it might be something to do, I'm not sure if they ended up.
Mr. Brower, is there a 30-second answer?
Concrete's not even.
Is there a 30-second answer?
Yeah. Is there something specifically?
For the cop, I'd be a little reluctant to just start talking. Yeah, I'm not really not prepared to talk about it.
But there was no specific issue with the land or?
Well, there, there were some foundation issues. It's, it's a tricky area because of the, the history of the site and, and the subsurface conditions. I don't, I, I'd be reluctant to say that that's X percentage of the explanation, but that's certainly part of it. You know, it was, it was done with, with good durable materials, you know, that's certainly another aspect of it. You know, materials that were designed to hold up for a long period of time and under, under, you know, you know, typical heavy, you know, institutional use.
What kind of time horizon, when you say long-term durable to you?
Well, it's all about maintenance. If, if it's maintained properly, indefinitely. You know, if not maintained properly, in, in 10, 15, 20 years, you're going to start seeing deterioration.
What do you have to do to maintain the concrete?
Well, it's not concrete, but.
What is it?
Well, it's brick and it's stone, and it's, it's, you know, metal railings, and, you know, things have to be painted and caulked. I think the, the biggest danger, and you see this on the front of the library already, is the, the salt that's used in the wintertime, and when snow gets piled up against the walls, it's, it's very, very corrosive. You know, that to me is the biggest maintenance issue.
I'll give you a brief perspective. I think, Dave, we're going to actually get into it a little more at a future meeting, so I wanted to answer Deborah's question.
No, that, that's good. I, I still think that it's an awfully big expenditure. I'm not sure, not knowing everything, I'm not sure that it's the best use of that kind of expenditure, and I'm not saying it's not.
You got a brief explainer.
So, and that's, that's kind of what I'm hearing from people I talk to, it's a, it's a sticker shock on, on the whole thing. And then one other quick question. I noticed the bathrooms downstairs are now closed to the public, one of which is a handicap bathroom. That seems a little odd to me. What is going on with that?
Maybe the, I think that was a decision made in the office, I don't think it was made by anybody at this table.
Yeah.
Mr. Metcalf?
We can make it available to anybody who needs to use it, it's just, couldn't keep the, couldn't keep the bathrooms clean as public restrooms, so that we made the restrooms up here available to the public.
Right, because it's a handicap bathroom, I don't know if you can really close it like that. And if the sign says it's closed to the public, I don't think that's appropriate personally.
Okay. Noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Ms. Dubois?
Thanks, I'm standing up. Torja Dubois, 111 Price, and my comments and questions are relevant to what, what's your first, Steve, I asked about, and the questions up here and all regarding the library terrace. And I think it would be immensely helpful to get some of the background about all this on the table. And in my effort to understand it, because I was at meetings where it was discussed, and, you know, I understand what the origins of it were to some degree anyway, but the only thing that I was able to come up with were the 2012 articles where the cost estimate was 55,000 to 75,000.
Mr. Block, if you could address council.
Oh, sorry, I know he was interested. Sure. I actually, my comments are intended for everybody on this council, so.
That's a good point.
Yeah, so, so the last article in 2012 said that at a following council meeting, there would be a discussion of deciding on a not-to-exceed figure, and I don't know that if, whether that was ever done, but, but I, those minutes are not available on the website, and so I just think there's so much about it that would be really helpful to understand and have out there for the public. And much as I attend a lot of meetings and all, I can't say that I've learned about the whole stormwater thing and the funding. I'd love to understand that better than I do now, and how they go together, because a couple of meetings ago I asked about that, and that's when I heard and other people learned that the cost of the terrace was not being covered by that funding, whereas previously it sounded like it was, so that was good to clarify that part of it. So I just think there's a lot of it that it would be wonderful to just, you know, kind of look at where we are, what are the costs, how did it go from 75,000 to, you know, next closest bid, 350,000, which doesn't include architects' fees or anything, or maintenance, or will there be furniture there? The trees are down, will there be umbrellas? Because there's no longer any shade in that area. So I would just ask that the property committee, that we work on getting some of that out there and, and help the public to understand where it came from, where it's going, and what happens next.
I think, given the current situation, I'll just respond quickly.
Yeah.
You'll see that public discussion over the next couple of weeks.
Great, oh, and another quick question, how many trees were taken down? The library told me four, I heard it was two, so I'm just.
It was four.
Four, okay, and, and so what was the?
Yeah, one was dead.
Right, I know, yeah. And then, and I, yeah, I mean, what I heard from the library is that the other trees were fine, but they were removed. And so, so what was the cost of that, and what was the company that did it?
I just, I don't have that.
$3,800, Preservation Tree Company.
That's right, that's right. It was $3,800. $750 to grant.
You're in luck this time. You have to pay first.
$750 to grant the stump.
He's right, good memory.
Oh, it was $3,800 plus the 750.
$3,800 plus the stump.
Plus the stump.
Yeah, so that's kind of information I think the public is really going to appreciate having out there, so we all can. What is it and why?
Just wanted to.
Thank you.
Years ago, four, five years ago, I know, council worked with the preservationists to re-point the library so it could last another 100 years. The preservationists recommended removal of the trees.
Right.
Close to the building, as has been already been said in this meeting.
No, no, not in this meeting.
I think because of last year.
You remember that, yeah, yeah. So the, so the removal of the trees was really necessary so that the building would last more, longer, and, and we'll plant, I'm sure we'll be planting more trees.
Yeah. Right, we just want that.
I think there was a couple of discussions about that specific species of tree.
Yes.
And maybe that it was not the correct tree to be so close to the foundation, that it was causing moisture issues throughout that whole section of the building, and that a better choice of tree.
Could be made.
Could be made, and then that kind of dovetailed to this project and where we are today. But as I mentioned, I think you'll see a much, a very detailed public discussion about the future of this project, and the money that will be spent in trees. And the trees, coming up.
Great, thank you.
Coming up next, don't change your channel.
I also just learned that I'm not going to take Sean in a trivia contest. It's 38 total.
Oh.
30, 60, plus 750, 38, 10.
30, 60.
Stronger memory.
All right.